Invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We've got two more. All right, since the comments, we do have one. Ms. Elizabeth Reed, you're up.
I came tonight to speak again about the golf course. I brought receipts the last time that y'all got to see of the problems that I'm having. Tonight, I wanted to talk about the commitment that the city made to purchase this golf course and maintain it as a golf course. And along with that, I feel like you took on the liability of the golf course. And there's certainly a liability there. The golf course sits right beside 16th Street. It's a very busy street. There's vehicles, there's motorcycles, there's people who cycle on that street, jog, walk. School bus stopped there that I shared with you before that some children nearly got hit by a golf ball as they were getting off of the bus. There are very serious concerns about people's safety, not just the vehicles or home or property. Tonight, I'm focusing on individual safety, and it is a real concern. Also, we have the fire department down the road. What if they're coming up the street, coming to your house with an ambulance, and they get a golf ball right in the windshield, which has happened to me? So, I think the city ought to consider this netting because it is on a very busy street. Everybody uses that street. And in other cities, they put the netting up. I'm not asking for netting all the way down. I'm just asking for, I don't know, a couple of sections, something to prevent from that first tee. For some reason, and golfers can relate to that, I can't. For some reason, they like to go sideways instead of straight down the course. But again, I feel like you, as the city, since you've taken on this golf course, that you've taken on the liability that goes along with it. And I'd like you to please consider putting up the netting. I know it is a cost, but there's already been an eye-watering $1.6 million spent on this golf course. I think a little bit more could be spent to make it safe for those people who travel on this street. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was the only one I have this evening. So, we'll move on to council communications. Does anybody have anything?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
So, it was brought to my attention at a Parks and Recreations meeting that we do get money to upkeep the park, and we have a fund for that. What we don't get is money to upgrade the park, like shade and for those stands, and water, to water the outfield, you know, something to keep the dirt from blowing in people's faces. Because I do know there are other parks coming in close to us that are probably going to be nicer than us because they're just building them. So, I was wondering what we could do to not only give money to upkeep, but give money to upgrade.
So, yes, that's the $350 million question, right?
Right.
So, no, I agree with you. We, as a community, need to maintain and upgrade our sports complexes. Like you said, there's competition coming. There's competition already here. And I know that one of the focuses that I've had, that Jim shares, is bringing more tournament direction in-house. So, instead of tournament directors from outside the community coming in and making the gate and then leaving, you know, and going back to where they live.
Right.
The city runs it ourselves. We earmark those funds we raise back for the sports complex and Parks Department. And that right there would be a huge revenue generator as opposed to just lead loss that's gone.
Okay.
So, I know that that's in the works. I know that Jim and Spencer have hired somebody that I think is what their goal is for that person, is to kind of do more tournament directing. And that's just one of the things.
Right, right.
You know, parks are usually, you're not going to make money on parks. But with a sports complex, we have an opportunity to generate some revenue. And I believe there is a way that we can earmark that revenue to stay within the Parks Department and Sports Complex when it's generated down there.
And can we earmark it to upgrade, not just to upkeep?
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, can we use it to make shade? Can we, you know, not just to mow the lawn and, you know?
No, you're exactly right. And also, having good community partnerships, because I know, it was a few years ago, I want to say two or three, that I believe Chickasha Little League spent quite a bit of money on the ball fields with new dirt. And I know we pitched in as a city, I believe through the CIA. That's when that little blurb in the CIA's indentured tourism part in there got put in there by Chris Mosley. But yes, no, I'm right there with you. I don't know what that looks like, but we need to have the discussion on how we
Yeah.
not only maintain, but improve the sports complex and our other parks, not just the sports complex.
Right, because I mean, I had no clue. This is my first, you know, circus, you know, on this. And, you know, they told me it brings in 220,000 people a year. So, I mean, that's not only business, I mean, that's bringing, that's restaurant business, that's Walmart business, that's, I mean, that's a lot of revenue that's bringing in that I know we're putting some of it back into it, but I feel like we need somehow to, you know, put some of it into upgrading it.
No, I agree with you. And it's not just for the city infrastructure, it's for our local small businesses as well because I know on a personal side.
Yes.
That when that ball fields are full.
Yes.
We'll probably see a 15 to 20 percent bump.
That's right.
And it's not just, you know, the inner urban restaurant, it's everywhere.
It's all of them.
Yeah. So, I would love to see those ball fields full every weekend that we have the chance to have them full. And I think that'll go a long way to when we start doing it ourselves to a degree, we'll be able to control that. We won't have blacked out, you know, where tournament directors book us, but then don't use us because we're the secondary site, not the primary site, so.
Okay, okay. I think we need to discuss that a little bit more at some point.
Agreed. Thank you, Kim.
Yes. Oh, and a thank you, John, Fourth and Missouri. Did you see that?
Yeah, yep. Getting ready to bring that up?
Yeah, yeah, it's really smooth. Thank you, thank you for the road.
It's not just Fourth and Missouri, we're seeing a lot of.
Oh, no, yeah, absolutely.
A lot of activity by Public Works.
Yeah.
They're doing some cleanup jobs, which makes me happy.
That's right.
We start cleaning stuff up.
All over town.
And Omar and his crew got to go out on Carolina, and there was grass that was six feet tall out there behind some houses on Carolina. They cleared the area.
Very nice.
And made some ladies out there very, very happy.
Very nice. Thank you, Omar.
Anybody got anything else? All right. Move on to item four, consent docket.
Motion to approve consent docket is presented.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Irving?
Yes.
Heffleway?
Yes.
Smith?
Epstein.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
Epstein.
Suther?
Yes.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes.
After the meeting, I'll get with Jim, I'll get you an answer. Item six, A, discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve contract with Dobson Fiber to provide internet service for the amount not to exceed $1,744 per month, and authorize the mayor to execute the same.
Questions, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm curious about this one. Apparently, we've used internet service in the past and had a different provider, and that time period of that commitment is up. Is that correct?
That would, Shay would probably be the best person to speak to that.
I think it said September in the.
Yeah. But I think this service is going to, if I remember right, Shay, can you come up here, please? It's not only more cost-effective, it's a better service to the facilities. So, I think if I remember right, it's going to be a little cheaper, but also offer a better service. Mr. Burris was asking if our current contract with our internet provider is up, and if this is a replacement or?
Yes.
Okay.
So, most of our internet right now, or all of our internet right now is with AT&amp;T, and that contract expires at the end of September, and so this will be replacing that.
And this?
At most locations, I should say.
I was going to say, is this all city facilities?
No, it will not cover the sports complex or the airport.
It's because they don't have actual fiber out there, correct?
They do have fiber out there, but Dobson has not built out there, and it's cost prohibitive for us to put it out there at this time.
Gotcha.
So, knowing that we're going, if council were to be happy with this and move forward, instead of one provider, we're having two providers, is the remnant to items that AT&amp;T provides, is that still included when we calculate our savings?
We do not have, we don't have a contract with AT&amp;T for the new locations yet. They'll continue to, from what I understand, go off of what they're at until we get a new contract with them on those two locations.
So, basically, go month to month at the current rate? But at the two locations?
And then, you know, we will absolutely work to get a new contract with them at that time. I requested new rates, and I don't have that at this point.
From AT? That's interesting. So, is that the only options we have in Chickasha for, to tackle this project, would be AT or Dobson?
That is a long storied past.
Or the best, two likely places you went shopping?
Yeah. We tried Hillary when they first came to town.
Okay.
It was, it didn't really work out the way that it was supposed to. I know AT&amp;T's kind of been good to work with, and then also a nightmare at times.
This is going to give us better speeds at a better rate, and it's going to be more reliable. If you look at the information that's included in your packet, it's got some information about the Dobson network. I actually have someone from Dobson here who is happy to answer questions about their network. But they own the entire system, whereas AT&amp;T basically connects from a provider like Dobson to our building. Dobson will own that entire network, and so it'll be a little bit more reliable, especially like when things go down, there's only one person it can go down on, it's on them. Whereas with AT&amp;T, it could be AT&amp;T, it could be whoever they're getting their internet from, and so it could take a little bit longer.
So, when there are issues, it's going to be a faster response time as well?
They also have a local call center, and so they are out of Oklahoma City. So, if we have an issue at 2:00 in the morning over at the PD and they need somebody to answer, they're going to answer right here in Oklahoma at that time.
So, I looked through the claims list, and of course, I wanted to pass it, and I also, kind of like Charlie, I'm wondering when the date of transition is, but we also have Optimum, and we're paying bills to Optimum. So, does that go away?
Optimum is primarily TV service.
Okay, does that go away?
No.
So, why can't you use Dobson's TV service?
Dobson doesn't have a TV service, if I remember right.
They have.
I think they have like streaming, but they don't have it, yeah.
Our Channel 3 broadcast is also through Dobson, but that's what we have all of our cable with. That's also just not something that I've tackled to be fully transparent, so.
Okay. Okay, so, we have actually AT&amp;T, Verizon, Optimum, and several other communications pieces in the puzzle. And I just noticed the Optimum thing because we're going to switch over to Dobson, which I think is a good idea, far superior to what was in town before. However, valid questions, how are we going to make it clean? The best possible thing, the Dobson reps in the room? TV, question mark?
We don't offer it.
Not going to happen then? Okay, that's an answer.
Hey, Clark, I don't think there's one provider in this community that offers everything we need at every location we needed. I think we're going to have to piece mill it together to a degree.
Okay. Works for me.
Anybody else have any, anything else? I still need a motion in a second.
Motion, second, please.
I'll make a motion that we move forward with this.
Second.
Last chance for discussion.
Well, last question, maybe?
Yes, sir.
Would a Chickasha citizen expect to see anything new as far as, I think that's what they would call appurtenances on the building or anything like that? Is it going to be pretty much something that not noticeable about the community? We're not going to see a new silver box out in a right-of-way somewhere, or nothing different than a homeowner would see on their, on.
So, I guess you'd use the previous services, like box and stuff like that?
So, that then is different than the residential because, and I do like your service, I can't see it, so I'm looking around the corner, but there was a new box that had to be put on because it's fiber, not coax, as it comes into the house. And so, it changes the way it looks, and you'll have to have a new box, I assume, because you can't use the old one, plus the lines will run differently and.
Yeah, I don't know, because on my rental house, they went through the same hole in the house.
They can go through the same hole, but the box is different.
Is it?
And they won't use the same one. So, I don't know if that's an answer to your question, Charlie.
Thank you. Thanks for driving. It's like that little white box that sits on the wall, right? Okay. I have Dobson on one of my businesses, and it's just a little white box that sits on the inside, it's kind of like a modem. Roll call.
Heffleway?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Suther?
Yes.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Irving?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. Item six B, discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve pay application number two, amount of $10,081.93 to COC 2409 Chickasha, PD Canopy to WW Builders, Inc.
Make a motion. In stereo?
You go, John, on second.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the pay application number two in the amount of $10,081.93 COC 2409 Chickasha Police Department Canopy to WW Builders, Incorporated.
Second.
Discussion?
Has it broken, Mayor? Is there any, anything to, I've driven by, but I didn't look. Is there anything happening out there on the?
Two weeks ago, when I was at Citizens Police Academy, they had kind of cut the concrete to.
Oh, good, thank you.
And all that stuff, yeah. Now, they've probably done more since then, but I know that that's certainly been done. Anybody got anything else? Roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Suther?
Yes.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Irving?
Yes.
Heffleway?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. Item six C.
Read that.
Discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve ordinance 2025-8. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the CHK Grady County, State of Oklahoma, amending the code of ordinance of chapter 20, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 3, Fire Code and Other Regulations, Division 4, Fireworks, Section 20-137, manufacture, sell, and discharge of fireworks to permit the limited sale of fireworks within municipal limits while maintaining a prohibited on discharge providing for permit requirement standards of operation and enforcement, amending section 20-14 seizure of fireworks by renaming section 20-141 enforcement and seizure and provide for enforcement and to provide that fireworks may be seized if offered for sale or held in violation of this division, providing that the funds received are restricted to support the Fourth of July community engagement event that promotes public safety, civic pride, and community relationships with expenditures limited to legitimate public purposes, providing for codification, providing for repealer, providing for serviceability, and providing for an effective date.
Questions, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just simply, why is this home here? What's going on? This seems so strange and lengthy.
Yes, well, I'm actually the one that requested something similar to this.
Okay.
So, my idea was, is that people go right outside of town to buy them anyway. Why aren't we at least allowing limited sale inside town to not only get permit fees, but also sales tax revenue, right? So, that was kind of where I was going for it. And plus, to help civic clubs and things like that are listed in here, to have avenues for additional fundraising and stuff like that.
By limited sale, what are we saying?
I think it's limited who can sell them, right? There's provisions in there for who can obtain a permit to have a fireworks stand. I think it's, you're going to get me lying, but it's civic clubs, religious organizations, nonprofits, things of that nature.
Internal educational.
There's a limited time for sale, too.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
For, you know, just a week and a half, I believe, Rachel, what is it, week and a half?
June 27th to July 4th.
June 27th through July 4th.
This is very similar, the Optimus Club used to sell Christmas trees. Now, the Optimus Club can sell fireworks.
Yep.
Exactly.
Yep. That was my whole reasoning behind it, it's just, you know, it seems, why aren't we doing it if it's allowed literally two feet outside of town?
I see your valid points about that. I'm concerned about the enforcement of it wouldn't, wouldn't, would just be hard to enforce. The more available there are within town, the more we're going to, oh, gosh, can you believe it's 3:30? And, you know, what are we hearing still? It happens a lot in more, too.
I was going to say, it happens already.
During the holidays and stuff. So, and then I'm concerned by you mentioning limited sale being only available. I thought, well, by golly, if this is important, I'm looking at Jim back there going, too, if it's important for anybody that's an entrepreneur, then it should be free and open to anybody that wanted to do it. So, why would we limit the people or the organizations available? It'd be kind of exclusive to, just handpicking.
Yeah, no, I think it was modeled after successful, other successful ordinance in surrounding communities. I believe this one's modeled a lot after the Mustang ordinance. And so, you take what seems to be working, and why reinvent the wheel? You just make it rounder, right? So, and plus, this is the first time, I believe, Chickasha's had it in recent history, so roll it out in small doses, right? Instead of just making it a free-for-all. You talk about hard to enforce. If you just made it a free-for-all, that would be extremely hard to enforce versus the way it's currently written with a limited amount of people applying for permits.
I hear you. Thank you. And so, if I may, the enforceability piece falls to the fire chief and the chief of police. Are you guys comfortable with this? You've read it and know that, okay, all right. Because I just got my copy today, and I know that it's a, my first comments were, okay, and it got answered, a brief summary of where this came from, and the other is, in what we had in our original thing, was two amendments, one renaming, five provisions. And so, they're all in here, so I'm comfortable with that. But as long as there is an avenue of enforcement.
These are modeled off of other municipalities that are doing this. I came from a municipality that did something similar to this, and it was written almost exactly the same way, in which schools were, the football team, the wrestling team, cheerleaders, civic groups were able to have these fireworks stands. We went out and we inspected them. They're very basic and things like that, so you just go and get the, you know, like Mayor Grayson said, we're bringing this out piece by piece. And so, there will be more added on to this, I'm sure, as we move forward, like the actual fee schedule, things like that, that haven't been established yet.
Okay, super. Mayor, that brings up another thought. What would be the next possible season in which we would want to allow this? New Year's. Okay. It seems like we've got a little time to talk about it, and maybe see the whole thing that you're suggesting.
As far as, this is the whole ordinance, you talking about the fee schedule?
Yeah, he mentioned that there might be more to come, more pieces to this.
Well, I think he was referencing, if this goes well, we roll it out, and we like what's happening, we can add to, take away from, we can modify it like a living document.
In the years.
I don't think he, there's no, I don't have anything planned in addition to this. I think what Chief San Diego was referring to is, this thing may evolve over time based on the feedback and. on the feedback and what we see happen with the implementation of this ordinance.
I believe that's what the chief was referring to.
Well, it's sure nice to have a little more time on it and hear from the public, in my view. Just bounce it off the public a little bit, a little bit longer. We've got several meetings before it would affect New Year's.
We can always repeal it, too. Like, if the public comes to us and says, we don't like that or it's a horrible idea, we can always take it away. It's, like I said, it's not set in stone once, the council can always change things.
It's good to know.
The feedback I've received over the years since, you know, I've been involved is, why aren't we doing this? You know, and I know that the popping of fireworks passed a certain time, so trust me, annoys me, too, drives my dogs crazy. But I don't think this is gonna stop or worsen that. I think it's gonna happen regardless. You know, it's already something that the police department can't enforce because that's all they do during that type of year. So I think as long as people are being safe about it, we give them an opportunity to be safe and responsible about it.
Maybe in that, in that we would provide a city designated area where it is okay for families to go out and celebrate freedom and liberty?
I don't know how a designated area would work. I mean, there are some municipalities that do that, but are people actually gonna do it? I don't know, we can't make them, you know? I don't think this is gonna change how people pop fireworks. They're gonna do it regardless, just like they did this last Fourth of July. They're already celebrating freedom, they're already doing it.
The real goal is the city is avid for tax dollars.
Well, that may get more convenient for our citizens by not having to drive out of town to get it.
Well, if I may add to this, whenever I was in school, which was a long time ago, but when I was in high school, I was on the drill team and we were able to go and do exactly what you're talking about. Again, it was just outside of Chickasha, but we did that, maintained the stand so that we could go to Thunderbird for our camp. So I think it's a good thing for kids to be able to do things like that.
So when I was in, growing up, our youth group did a fireworks stand at Johnson's Recker and it paid for our entire youth group to go to church camp every summer. Three years ago, the high school girls' basketball camp set up a fireworks stand, but we had to do it at Sharon Baptist Church out by front. So I think it'd be great for them to be able to do it here in town.
Well, that, yeah, I mean, so I think increased accessibility, you actually cater more to the citizens because they don't have to drive out of town. So maybe you pick up the citizens that feel disenfranchised because they can't drive 10 miles out of town to get it. They can just, you know, walk a block and get it. So I don't know. I don't know how this is gonna play out. That's why we roll this out if we choose to as a council, we see how it works, and we can always modify it as we go, like Chief Sami Diego was talking about.
So to make it clear, we're only going to do, like, fundraising groups?
Yes, I believe the way it's worded in there is civic organization, schools, religious organizations.
Essentially, essentially right now.
Okay, just making it clear.
Nonprofit, civic, charitable, fraternal, educational or religious organizations. Sports teams, youth sports teams, only if they are under the authority of Chickasha Public Schools.
Okay. I was just clearing it up.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve six C.
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
Upstain.
Suther?
Yes.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Irving?
Yes.
Hebbeth White?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. Item six D, discussion consideration of possible action to approve resolution 25, 2025-21R, a resolution of the mayor and council members of the city of Chickasha, Grady County, State of Oklahoma, establishing a need for security lighting and providing a location for security lighting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Will that be one that shines down on the intersection and not one that shines in the eyes of drivers?
I think Omar has an answer for us.
It's pointing up for the aliens.
So the idea, or what we had came up with was kind of like how they have in the parking, in the parking lots, kind of has three lights and just kind of facing down. But the problem is, is it's only gonna be in one section. It's gonna be on the southwest corner because that's the only area that has capability of getting electricity, too. So where it will be kind of shining out into the, into the, into the road, it's also gonna, we're trying to make it to where it's gonna light all aspects of it.
So this is a country club in Norridge Road?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the intersection Charlie was talking about, yeah.
Yes. And so that's, I think it's three 500 watt lights versus the single, just regular bulb. I don't know how many watts it is, it's not very bright, but I mean, if you just did that one, it would just illuminate just that little bitty corner, just that section, which really wouldn't help anything. So you gotta get something big enough and on top of that, you gotta get it high enough, which they're discussing what they can do because of all the transition lines that they got going through there. They don't want to disrupt or mess anything up in there, so they're trying to figure out a way to put that up and make it bright enough to where it lights up the entire intersection.
Omar, is this a PSO pole that's gonna be going on or is it our pole?
A PSO.
PSO, okay. I'm assuming that if we do have comments on where it's shining, that they'd be willing to try to adjust it if need be.
I would, yeah, I would, yes, I would assume so, yes. I mean, they've always, we've worked with them and they work with us, so it's back and forth. We have a pretty good relationship with them.
Thank you, Omar. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Burris?
Yes.
Suther?
Yes.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Irving?
Yes.
Hebbeth White?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. Item six E, discussion consideration of possible action to approve resolution 2025-22R to accept FAA grant AIP 3-40-0018-023-2025 and authorize the mayor to execute upon receipt from the FAA.
Make a motion that we approve resolution 2025-22R as presented. Second.
Discussion.
Some more questions, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So this says execute a grant agreement. Would this not be something that we'd already maybe approved through council and then at this point, we're just authorizing you to accept the funds or is this an application?
I think this is reimbursement, maybe.
It's a reimbursement, okay.
For the hangers, the hanger that.
Come up to the podium, please.
Trying to do the math in my head for the first one and the second one. So we had a project in 2023 where we were building tea hangers. Project cost was around 1.2 million. These were two separate FAA grants, post grants, that we were awarded. They came in two different phases. And so the first one we got was a little over 500,000 and this one that we got was 447,000, I believe. Those numbers are very close, within up to 1% accuracy. And this was the second part of that. The way that they did the grants, we were able to ask FAA for one grant and then they went after another grant to get the reimbursement for the other grant. And this is the second portion of that grant so that we can have those hangers here and let our citizens enjoy them.
So like we established, this is the reimbursement money we've already spent, right?
This is money that's already been spent, yes, sir.
Are these hangers in place?
Yeah.
Excuse me, sir.
Are these hangers in place?
They are in place, they're being used currently and therefore with a waiting list.
Is it the tea hanger style?
Yes, sir, it is.
How many?
There's 10.
And they're all occupied?
They're all occupied with six people on a waiting list currently.
Do they command the same rent or some of them bigger or smaller?
There are 370 each a month.
$370 a month?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and this is silly, I should know better, but this is in the council meeting, but later we're gonna see something in a different meeting. Is that the same subject, just the proper way to do it in the other meeting or do we have something actually different in the?
You're talking about in the airport?
Yes, sir.
It's the same.
It's the same body, two different bodies are.
That's just how we do it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Edward.
You're very welcome. I apologize, trying to do the math there and I was like, I don't think that number's right, but it was, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Suther?
Yes.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Irving?
Yes.
Hebbeth White?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. Motion, or item seven, motion for adjournment.
So moved, second.
We're adjourned, I'd like to call the Chickasha Municipal Authority to order, and a roll call, please.
Hatchet?
Here.
Irving?
Here.
Hebbeth White?
Here.
Smith?
Present.
Alexander?
Here.
Burris?
Here.
Suther?
Here.
Grayson?
Here. Item two, consent docket.
Motion to approve the consent docket as presented.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Irving?
Yes.
Hebbeth White?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
Upstain.
Suther?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. Item four A, discussion and consideration of possible action to approve Hudson Prince Work Order 10, Master Services Agreement, Project Number 2376 for the East Grand Avenue Widening Project.
Make a motion that we approve Hudson Prince Work Order 10, Master Services Agreement, Project Number 2376 for the East Grand Avenue Widening Project.
Second.
Discussion.
Do we have representatives here? Rachel, our representative.
Yes, sir, we do have Hudson Prince here if there's, like, specific engineering questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Crosby and I did go through this pretty heavily with them, if there's anything any of us can answer.
Everybody knows I'm slow with this stuff and I thank you, but I had my packet on Wednesday night and I looked at it early Thursday morning. But I had this note and I circled design speed 35 miles per hour and I had this question. What would be different about the design if the requested design speed were 45 miles an hour?
So I'm not exactly sure, but Jared might be able to answer that for us.
All right.
Leave it to Charlie.
So specifically on this project, geometric, sometimes vertical horizontal alignments, which we don't have any modifications there. Sometimes you have different requirements for clear zones, which isn't gonna be an issue on this project either. So specifically on this project, no difference. It's posted at 35 today, so we're gonna design it for 35. And as we get into design, you know, there could be some specific things that we do find during the design process.
We hopefully won't have to lower it, get a nicer road.
That's right.
And it happens all over Oklahoma. You got a traditional road, people are busy working, doing what they can, they got a speed limit, here comes some money, they make a new road high wide and handsome and the speed limit gets cut in half.
Don't foresee that happening.
And I think that would be an aggravation to people if that were to happen here. So that was my concern. Did it also include something about Chickasha standards? And I had this question, could you please describe what level of Chickasha standards are, what are the Chickasha standards if we were gonna describe that to our citizens?
Sure, it's the ordinance, so lane widths, again, primarily just lane width, driveway standards, things of that nature.
Thank you.
Yep, you bet.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Irving?
Yes.
Hebbeth White?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Suther?
Yes.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. Item four B, discussion consideration of possible action to allow Chickasha Chamber of Commerce to use the golf course to conduct the Chamber Golf Tournament on September 5th, 2025.
I move we approve the use of the golf course by the Chickasha Chamber of Commerce for their annual golf tournament on September 5th, 2025.
Second.
Discussion.
Has there been any more movement on the group that's gonna take over the golf course?
Yes, well, I, I'm meeting with the president of the university tomorrow and on Wednesday at 4 o'clock, we have another meeting with the group. They've been given a deadline, which we talked, by the end of September, to take it over October 1 and run it. And they have raised, in my understanding, they've raised more than enough money to run the golf course. They're looking right now to hire a professional golfer that would actually run the shop there. He would bring in his own equipment, things of that nature, you know, golf clubs, balls, things up for sale and do that. And they're trying to work that out. And once that comes, they'll have to bring an item in September back to the council for approval, for you to look at it. And if everything is agreeable, they will take over October 1.
Okay. What happens if they don't meet that drop dead date? What are we gonna do?
Well, at that point in time, we'll have to look and see if everybody's not agreeable. If not, then the golf course will not be a golf course and we'll look at running it as a city park.
Okay.
That'd be my decision, I mean, the council can make its own decision at that point in time.
John, I was CC'd on an email today, it was about something totally different, but did have a blurb update on what they're putting, they're waiting on their 501(c)(3) and that can take months. So organizational, they're looking at falling under another 501(c)(3) to get going and present something to us so they can get going while they're waiting on their actual paperwork to get done, so.
It's my understanding they have raised more than enough money.
I think the capital's there, you're right.
And they've got, the money has been raised to operate it. But now it's just the legalese of working all the various things out at this particular moment.
So I didn't realize, in that email said, like, it costs about $8,000 to form a 501(c)(3) as far as all the filing and all that stuff.
I think they're talking even about a number of people that are even sponsoring holes that they'll be responsible to really repair that hole in the manner it needs to be and they're gonna adopt a hole, I guess, of a nine-hole golf course and move forward with that. So at this point, things look very positive.
Any more discussion?
Jim, are you the applicant on this one?
Yes, sir.
It just looked like there was a few blanks on there and I think that's easy enough that people that are in the know, done it for years, time of year, it's happening and whatnot, but to a citizen that would have looked up the packet online, there wasn't even a phone number, I don't think, for them to be able to call and ask you about, well, tell me about the tournament this year. Or when it says description of all events and all functions, is it one of those scrambles? And that's all that's happening out there or what's your plans?
It's the same golf scramble we've been doing every year, the chamber's been doing. We, when we first heard of the course potentially selling, we actually looked at moving it to Winter Creek. Once this committee emerged and there seemed to be a strong commitment in Chickasha community Once this committee emerged, and there seemed to be a strong commitment in Chickasha community to keep it a golf course, we felt like it was important not to leave and go to Winter Creek, but instead to have it here in Chickasha. But it's a, it's a AM scramble and a PM scramble. We have around ten or eleven teams in each scramble, will provide lunch. It's the same thing we've been doing, we'll just be handling it different, working, obviously, with the city's permission. We'll be paying a fee to the city for the cost of the tournament.
Most of the people that are return visitors to your tournament may not notice any difference as far as, oh, last year was like this, and this year, you're pretty much trying to deliver the same tournament that you have in the past.
We feel confident that we'll be able to do that based upon the results of the Washita Valley Tournament and how well that went off. The course, we believe, is, is in good shape. The only difference is we'll be running the tournament ourselves rather than having the, the country club that ran it previously. I have some experience with that, and, and I feel confident that we'll be, hold a good tournament.
I bet you will. Thank you, Jim, for that update.
Jim, I just wanna say, I appreciate you guys keeping it here.
Me, too.
Chickasha Chamber of Commerce needs to have its Chamber Golf Tournament in Chickasha.
Agreed, agreed. We were, at one point, we were concerned it wouldn't be a golf course, and so that's why there's speculation. But once we knew it would still be a golf course, and then the answer to the other question, I think Mr. Crosby responded well to, I do believe strongly that this group is prepared, it's ready, and by October one, it will, if the council approves it when it comes before, they'll be able to run the golf course efficiently.
Mr. Mayor, Jim, I do have another question, curiously. There'll be insurance to back the city up as far as liability through the chamber, an event insurance?
Are we talking about the Chamber Golf Tournament?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, we carry liability insurance on all of our events. So, whether it's the food truck championship or the golf tournament, we have insurance.
Beautiful, and I think that's important and proper. I bet there's somebody present and some other people among the community that would wanna know, during this event, if a participant shoots one off the range and into Sixteenth Street or further, will that insurance address that matter?
You know, I don't, I'm not prepared to answer that right now without any insurance policy in front of me. It hasn't been an issue in the years I've done the tournament. So, when it's a scrambles, there's, it's, it's a little different format in terms of not quite the, the average golfer that's a high handicapper may not have to worry about that as much. But, but we'll certainly try to address any concerns that the citizens have about hole number two and shots going across Sixteenth.
Yeah. Would you be willing to ask for that in the insurance policy?
I would be willing to look into it, councilman. It typically in golf courses, in golf course management, it is the responsibility of the golfer, not, not the tournament holder or the, or the country club or the golf course, but I'm willing to look into it.
If you would look into it, would you also share that with your golfers, that they may be taking on quite a liability?
We'd be more than happy to let them know that any errant shots on hole number two are their responsibility.
Simply to say it this way, I imagine some of the windows that hadn't been broken have still got people looking at them.
I, I, I can't comment, I don't really have any.
And on that day, knowing that there hadn't been any golfers for weeks, and then it's tournament day, it might be pretty easy to find who's shooting them over. So, which I don't think anybody does on purpose, but the, the golf balls do carry liability.
Understood.
Yeah, thanks for addressing that, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Hebbelwhite?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Suther?
Yes.